So now we reconvene the January meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Did we approve the minutes?
Yes.
I thought we did. And then we'll move to public comment. Is there anybody who would like to make a public comment? And if you made a comment at the hearing, you're welcome to make a comment. Now, we would ask that you don't repeat yourself though, okay? Anyone would like to make a public comment? Please come down, Ms. Walker. For the record, your name?
You know, my concern, two could, two, one concern, one question. My concern is under the Finance Committee about the, uh, I hope, I know I'm saying this wrong, the Doxium Company contract for printing and billing mailing services. We would like to see city trade residents with some of those jobs with that contractor. I'm not sure how long we've been contracting that service out to print and mail documents, but we would like to see, see some city trade residents with those jobs. I don't know if those jobs are remotely or virtually, or if those jobs are outside of Michigan, but we need employed city trade residents. And number two, um, and I don't know if this is, is at the right, but I wanted to know, is what's the makeup of Mr. Brown's new cabinet? And, and I'm gonna go sit down.
Yeah.
The, the Doxium, Doxium Company for billing and printing mailing services. Line item C, that's what I have printed.
It's a Doxium, D-O-X-I-M.
Doxium, Doxium.
Which, which line item is it?
C, 220698.
Okay, that's not C on our agenda.
Oh, it's on the Finance Committee.
Eighty-two on our agenda.
It's not, y'all don't have this?
Oh, it's, oh, zero six nine eight. Kelatech and Doxium Company?
Yes.
It's line item G.
Oh, I apologize. I ain't got my glasses on. Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Uh, is there anyone else that would like to make public comment at the Board of Commissioners meeting? Mr. Williams?
Yes, D'Amico Williams, Chief Director, Hydrate Detroit. I would like to address the board in comments regarding last month's annual water meeting that we've had in regards to the collection of lead samples. I would like to praise Vice Chair Mary Blackman for saying what we all have been thinking. What's up with the low number of collection? The city of Detroit has a large housing stock. And I also feel that, um, I understand Mr. Smalley made comments and I thank him for his presentation. Sometimes it can get hard to get people to engage in a participatory, uh, opportunity. So I would like the Water Board to find ways to incentivize people, residents, to send samples of their, um, pipes, if they have lead or however, so that we can get a large collection. I also would like to point that we, the people of Detroit, have a youth team that have been out collecting lead samples and such. And so they could be helpful as well with getting the word out. This has to have better community participation. Uh, another concern I have is the moratorium. Yes, I was told that it was gonna be a year, extended to another year, but also the public's health and safety concerns of coronavirus with the Omicron variant is very serious. We don't want to take no precaution. I mean, we want to take precaution, but we don't want to lift things up to where it's all back to normal. It's not back to normal. So what we need to do, and I'm gonna say it again, is we need to have an incentive for people to come down to the Water Department, pay what they can, put any money down, don't put any fear or pressure, and pay the water bill. And, and don't intimidate folk. Let them come on down and you will have more revenue and more money than you can. I believe it. I guarantee it. And the third comment that I have is that, you know, we want to recognize the board, the customer service team of Matthew Phillips, Kimberly Crowell, Tiffany Jones, Katara Maxwell, and the team of DWSD that's out here, the customer service representatives that's on the phones, that's hearing from all of us. We thank them. We've seen tremendous, uh, improvements since I've gotten into this in 2014. And I just want to, on the record, make sure that we, uh, show appreciation to the customer service team and to DWSD for working with Hydrate Detroit. Because all we trying to do is make a, a situation better for customers and clients. And those, to make sure that water is an essential human right. It is life. We all have a connection and a spiritual source to water. So let's preserve and keep that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public that would like to? Anybody on Zoom? All right, hearing none. We will bring public participation to a point. And we will move on our agenda to item nine, communication. Uh, the first item is A with regard to one, two, three, four, five, six, seven items of communication. Can we get a motion to receive and file?
We'll receive and file, Mr. Chair.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on any of those items, Commissioner Kinlaw?
Yes, I noticed on here that there is an appeal. Is attorney possibly still on? Okay. Oh, she's, uh, okay, then to the chair, the, the appeal. Uh, is that an appeal that is filed in the same fashion of the one that we had to address as a body about a month ago, uh, not a month ago, a few months ago? Is that the same process timeline review in closed session?
I, I believe the appeal is an internal one. I don't know.
So there, okay, so they, they, remember there was an appeal that came at, uh, I was just seeing if that was, this was the same type of appeal? Well, we had to make a determination of this, just like you said, an internal appeal.
Are we talking protest or appeal?
Well, she did send the information. I remember, I remember reading it.
Okay, well.
It says appeal.
Yeah, it said.
I mean, my belief is the, the board does not have a role in adjudicating appeals, unless it's an extraordinary matter, but we'll find out.
No, I'm just saying, remember, we, remember we had a, a, a meeting where we, I'm just, you know, just making sure that, and I know there is a process. We do have a role in, in the appeal process. And that's why I was just wondering if this was one of those, or is this a different track?
Yeah, my memory, and again, my memory ain't as, ain't what it used to be. But my memory is that, um, the contractor came to us as was his right.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
And I think that was outside the formal appeal process.
No, that is part of the appeal process. Oh, yes, that's part of the appeal process where the, where they can appeal it to the board. And then we do what we did, you know, discussed it. Sorry about that.
I trust that whatever, whatever the process is, it's gonna play itself out.
Okay.
If we, if we just ask for the attorney press, we should get back to it.
We'll find out.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions about the items of correspondence in nine A? There's a motion on the floor to receive and file. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that is adopted. Next, we have, um, our monthly correspondence regarding claims. And actually, we have three months' worth of claims. So can I get a motion to receive and file October, November, and December claims report?
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All right. Commissioner Coleman and Commissioner Blackman, questions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion is adopted. Receipt of correspondence, we have the monthly FOIA requests for December 2021. Is there a motion to receive and file?
Mr. Chair.
And Commissioner Coleman, any discussion? All those in favor of receiving and filing the FOIA requests, please say aye.
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 Opposed? And that is adopted. And then item D, we have communication from Hydrate Detroit letter. Is there a motion to receive and file?
Don't move, Mr. Chair, receive and file.
And support.
Right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackman?
So I'd like to know when we're going to be discussing this item more in more detail? It's regarding virtual meetings? Their requests?
Um, maybe we can, I have a lot of problems with virtual meetings. And maybe what we can do is ask our legal counsel to take a look at it.
Yes, that's what I meant.
And I would like a report from the legal counsel anyways about why before the pandemic, you could participate remotely, as I think all of us have done from time to time. And now after the pandemic, apparently, we can't participate.
They changed the Open Meetings Act. They, they changed the Open Meetings Act to limit.
They being the legislature.
The legislature, state legislature did. It was a surprise to all of us. Yeah, yeah. I'm saying that's what the lawyers at the Detroit Health Authority, Wayne County Health Authority and the County Commission told us.
And, and that could be a problem for this board because we already have two meetings. And then we usually have a special meeting. We might have a meeting to approve a, a budget. I, I just know for me, I, I move around a lot. So I've got three offices in other countries. So I, I, that could potentially be, be an issue for me.
I, it, it, it.
It is an issue.
It is completely illogical that there's a policy that makes it more difficult to participate after we've been through the lockdown than before.
Yes.
That defies me.
So less than a quorum, the County Commission, we voted to basically have our committees. If it's less than a quorum, still meet virtually. Yeah, but it has to be for the purpose. You have to be clear about recommending, no decisions being made and all that stuff there. So we just did that last week.
You, you, you did that at?
Yeah, yeah, we're meeting virtually. Now, in the Detroit Wayne County Port. Jessica, huh?
Just for committees.
Just for committees, but the full board of committees. Now, I'm gonna tell you what's happening because the legislature of this house decided to go on, you know, adjourn and not meet because of COVID. So we have a port authority meeting and we're meeting virtually, you know what I'm saying? But when, there's no real action items. But, you know, people, we had three employees who got caught COVID. So it's like, I'm not going there. It's always the other board. So we're gonna meet virtually. And then, so now we'd just be able to justify it in court if someone wants to take us to court.
Well, I would say.
But you're not taking any action.
No, we're not voting on any actions. So I'm not making it, any, giving them any reason to take, right?
No, we don't wanna, you know, risk, we're gonna adopt contracts today. We don't wanna risk.
Oh, no, no, that, please, no.
Those contracts not being enforceable because.
Perhaps in our committees where we're recommending to the.
Yes, that's correct.
That we can continue to go virtual.
That's correct.
Until we figure out what to do with the board.
With the legislature, there's some push to get them to, like, like you were saying, to reopen it because it makes no sense, right? Yeah, so they, so they, they won't be back in session until next week because of COVID.
But I don't know if we can make that call, right?
I don't think we can.
You, you say.
I mean, that makes sense. I, I would.
You talk about the committee, no committees, we can because. Right, right, yeah, committees, we can make that call.
Okay.
We're not doing the action. We're recommending.
Right.
You know, it falls under the Public Meetings Act, too.
Yes, you can. Yeah, yeah, that's, we have an opinion from the lawyers that said that you can, as long as it's less than a quorum, you're not making any decision, you know what I'm saying?
This isn't a legal opinion, but if I were one of those annoying litigators, I would argue that a committee is a plenary body that takes action and.
Yes, yes.
Taking the action to recommend.
No, no, recommend, but it's not binding. I'm saying that's, you know, yeah.
I, I think we're.
And if it's less than a quorum.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
When there's less than a quorum.
The numbers are less than a quorum on the committee.
Correct. It specifically speaks to a quorum.
Less than a quorum of the full body.
Yeah, the full body, yeah.
I would argue the quorum of a committee is a majority of the number.
No, 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 the quorum, but they only recommend, they don't have, they're on the mid, they don't, it's not to make a decision.
I think we should, um, ask Debbie to check that out.
This should be a specific discussion item for next month's meeting.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I apologize. I had to step away for an urgent matter, so I'm back.
Oh, that's all right. We resolved it without you.
Okay.
I play a lawyer on TV.
Good job.
Commissioner Blackman?
No, I would.
Okay, all right, then, um, let's move to other items from the commissioners? Hearing none, unfinished business, there is none.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. I have a little difficult time hearing people, but I have, I have an ear infection. But I wanted to make sure that, uh, I told everybody, and I wasn't sure, I had told to Miriam about putting it on the website. And I had talked to Gary, the director, about, um, the information. And I did mention it to some of the commissioners, but I wanted to make sure that we asked about the reimbursement for funeral expenses under FEMA is paying and reimbursing up to $9,000 from any kind of deaths related to the coronavirus. And I just wanted to make sure that somebody, you know, will put it on, we put it on our website at La Salle, and Sire did also. But I think it's important because some people just didn't know that, that it's happening because people lost their loved ones and, you know, they just don't think about those things. And I thought it was important that we mentioned it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, we now move to item 12, and we have several items of new business. And I think, and Deborah, you can correct me. Uh, I, I don't know if, we, we are bringing these directly to the board without them being considered by a committee. I don't know if our bylaws require committee compliance. But perhaps we can get a motion that, um, we waive our ordinary rules and that we consider these items, knowing that they were not reviewed by a committee.
Yeah, that'd be great. That's fine.
And would someone like to make that motion?
They'll move that wording, Mr. Chair.
All right, Commissioner Blackman moves that we waive our ordinary rules for consideration, particularly of contracts, and that these matters be taken up by the board without benefit of advice from a committee. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion about that? And again, I think this is in the category of an abundance of caution. I don't want anyone to challenge the validity of any of these contracts. All right. So all those in favor of suspending our ordinary rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that is done. So the next item is item A. I have a motion. I'll make the motion.
Is that very clear to me?
No, I would, I would.
Mr. Chair, um, we, we need to see the motion. Michelle, can you pull up the letter? So they can actually read that motion there?
It's.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
It's the Ferguson Water Works project.
I would read the motion, Mr. Chair. Upon review of the December 8th, 2021 protest from Ferguson Water Works regarding Detroit Water and Sewer Department, DWSD's bids 489389 and 489441 and 489398, and review of a privileged attorney communication from General Counsel, the Board of Water Commissions for the City of Detroit Water and Sewer Department.
So, so Madam Chair?
Denies the protest and directs, directs it to act in accordance with this action. Yeah.
Is this a?
Is there support?
Yeah, is, 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 is this a, an action item for us?
Yes, it's an action item. We provided you with privileged communication about the status of the protest. And, um, you should have that. It may have been, I don't know if it's referred to earlier in the agenda, but you need to decide whether to approve or deny this, this protest in order to determine whether you can approve or deny the upcoming motion, uh, contracts related to the protest.
That's the point, that point of order. That's the point that I raised, Mr. Chair, that we had extensive conversation, that it wasn't just a packet. We actually had a meeting specifically to deal with that protest and ask questions. And we gave direction to staff and how to dispose of it. I don't think in this, and I like that format. I don't like the fact that it's thrown on here and then we acted at a later meeting, um, on, on the, on, on that contract. I don't like the fact that it's all right here, all there, and that we're not having a separate meeting to actually dive in and give real, true due process to that, to that protest.
But why don't we do this? And I, I will confess, I'm sure I received the privileged communication. I have not read it, and I'm unprepared.
And I'm unprepared as well.
Then, then why don't we put this on the table?
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chair, since we did not have committee meetings this month, that's when we would have talked further about.
Okay, okay, that's an out. That's, that's, that's.
What committee would this go to?
This would have been in the Finance Committee.
Then.
Good review of the package.
Okay.
Then why don't we, why don't we refer it back to the Finance Committee? And we'll take it up the first week of February unless we're time barred.
Well, no, that will be okay. That's your prerogative. Um, I just know that the, um, operations side's, side urgently needs the parts that are related to these bids. So they will have some heartburn about that. Perhaps we can schedule a special session, formal session, after the committee meeting in February.
To expedite.
Yes, let's do that.
Okay, that's fine. So item B, uh, item B, I think C and D will have to be tabled because you have to rule on the protest first.
All right, so, uh, item B, C, and D are also, well, will also be referred to the Finance Committee for the meeting in the first Wednesday of February.
Is it, is Mama Ta on here? Is this, is it B, C, D, and E, or just which ones?
It's B, E, and F.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So we, item D is appropriately before us.
And C.
Yes.
B, all right. Then. Is there a motion regarding traffic barricades and cones?
Which number is that?
D, 220695.
Mr. Chair.
We take up item C first.
I'm sorry, I, I thought we were tabling B, D, and F.
Yep, but C we should go.
B, C, and F.
B, C, and F?
B, E, and F.
Okay, B, E, and F.
I put circles around them. B, E, and F.
Well, then, then we should take up C first. 22069.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. Are we tabling these three items or what is the action?
We're referring them to the Finance Committee next month.
Yeah, that was, yeah, okay.
So.
Mr. Chair?
Make a motion on item C.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Coleman?
I, I, I move to the Board of Water Commissions for the City of Detroit Water and Sewer Department authorize directors to approve contract number 6004102, Interstate Truck Source Incorporated, for an as-needed OEM parts and repair service for DWSD-owned Mack trucks and related equipment for an amount not to exceed $360,000 for a term of two years. This also authorizes directors to take such other actions as may be necessary to accomplish the intent of this vote.
Support.
The movement's supported. Um, Ms. Burge, any comments on this contract?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Um, this contract was competitively solicited on mitten for 28 calendar days. Uh, we had 11 companies download the bid package. Um, and addendum was also issued to extend the date because we had not received any bid responses. Upon extension, we did receive one bid. Further research for other potential bidders was conducted. And it was verified that Interstate Truck Source is Michigan's only authorized OEM parts sales and full-service line repair supplier within a 50-mile radius. And procurement has confirmed that they are responsive and responsible and therefore recommend, recommending for award.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And that is adopted. Next, item D, 220695.
Mr. Chair?
There we have a motion. Commissioner Forte?
I move that the Board of Water Commissioners for the City of Detroit Water and Sewer Department authorizes the director to approve DWSD contract number 6004122 for traffic barricades and cones with Poco Sales, Inc. for a total contract amount not to exceed $209,372.50 and a term of two years.
Is there support?
Second.
It's been seconded. Ms. Burge?
Commissioners, uh, this, um, contract was competitively solicited. It was published on mitten for 22 calendar days. We had, of the 41 companies that, um, it was sent to, 22 did download it. However, we received only four bid responses. Poco Sales is the lowest responsive responsible bidder. And DWSD procurement does have all of the required documents and is recommending this vendor for award.
Commissioners, Commissioner Blackman?
Where is this company located?
It is in Canton, Michigan.
Where?
Canton.
Jackson?
Canton.
Canton.
Oh, Canton, Canton.
Sorry.
At least it's Wayne County.
Other questions or comments? Uh, on the motion then, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? The motion is adopted. We have referred item E to the Finance Committee, so we are now, uh, item F.
Referred.
That is deferred as well, all right. Item G. Commissioners? Commissioner Kinlaw?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I move that the Board of Water Commissioners for the City of Detroit Water and Sewer Department authorize the director to approve DWSD contract number 6004006 with Utilitech and Doxium, Doxium Company for billing, for bill printing and mailing services with a contract amount not to exceed $15 million for, in a term of five years. This also authorizes the director to take such other action as may be necessary to accomplish the intent of this vote. Need some more information on this one.
All right, is there support?
Second.
Commissioner Blackman supports. Ms. Burge?
Commissioners, this particular contract, because it is a service contract, DWSD published a request for proposals, um, for these billing and mailing, uh, services on mitten for 43 calendar days. It did close in April of last year. We received 10 proposals. The evaluation committee consists of, or consisted of the IT Applications Director, the Chief Customer Service Officer, and the Billing Manager. The criteria that they used to evaluate was experience, qualifications, project approach, and methodology. And the highest ranked proposer was Utilitech. Utilitech did have approved clearances at the time of the bid close. Since then, since it's been quite a few months, uh, they have reapplied for clearances. And so, um, we're requesting, uh, we're recommending for award, but procurement will not issue the contract until, uh, the clearances are approved.
Question, Mr. Chair. Okay, $3 million, does this go before that Financial Review Committee? I mean, $15 million, oh, I'm saying $3 million a year, I'm sorry. $3 million, so does it go before the Financial Review Committee?
Um, the Finance Review Committee has been replaced by us taking it to the mayor. And once the mayor, uh, has approved it, reviewed and approved it, then it will go to, uh, City Council.
Okay, so City Council will weigh in on it as well. Now, there was a resident that came in and asked questions as it relates to this. Where is this based out of? Can you give some, some background information on, you know, on who the, this company is?
Um, they are current, they are based out of Troy, Michigan.
Okay.
Um, and they are our current service provider for these services.
Okay.
And there was a question with regard to. And there was a question with regard to availability of jobs under this contract and I'm going to presume among the contract provisions is the usual requirement that a percentage of Detroiters be hired to perform these services. Is that correct?
No, this contract is not a construction contract.
I see, okay. All right, that answers the question.
Mr. Chair, I think you bring up a good point. How long has this company had this contract with us?
Oh, I would need to check, but it's definitely been probably five years or more.
And the reason I bring this up, this is a $3 million a year contract. This is not rocket science, the work that they're doing here. I think we could put some requirement that they hire some Detroiters to do some of this work here. I don't think that's a big ask.
I don't know.
Not a big ask. And I, I don't know that we want to change the terms of the contract here at the board table today, but to the extent that.
Open the question.
To the extent that we're supervising this contract, we can certainly make it very clear that that would be something we'd like to see.
Mr. Chair, just for processes, okay, the contract's before us now. Can we just refer it back to staff with comments? I'm asking y'all, just, y'all just question the processes.
I, I think the comments are part of the record of this, this, this meeting, yes.
So how would they be able to be effectuated? You know what I'm saying? Let's say for instance, okay, the comments, they come before us for our review. We're making these comments. Can we send it back to staff to go back and discuss with the, with the contractor, those of it, those additional comments and see if there's any response? And then they can bring it back to, bring it back to us.
Well, we're being asked to approve this contract today and we're either going to approve it or we aren't. If we don't approve it, that's opening negotiation again and possibly bad faith on our part or retrograde negotiations.
Oh, you just turned it to a lawyer.
Well.
Invite other bidders?
It comes before us.
Would it also invite other bidders?
But Jonathan, we certainly can approve it with comments.
Okay, is that what you recommend?
And that's what we're doing right now.
Okay.
So, you know, the director and the leadership have the benefit of the minutes to these meetings and we'll remind them that we're approving this contract today, but we would like them, to the extent that they have the discretion or the moral influence about the people signing the checks, that we'd like to see some positive impact in the employment of Detroiters.
Okay, I'll do this because they're existing contractor, but I would like, because I love, because our council always say, if y'all don't like it, then look, change the policy. I want to see whether or not that same language that we use for construction contracts, if we can put it, at least for certain thresholds in certain contracts and at least asked.
I agree with you.
Yeah, so moving, I'm saying, moving forward.
I need to, to be briefed or review that city employment component because I just assumed it automatically applied here.
Yeah, that's what he was.
We could all use a briefing.
This is a five-year contract too, so.
Okay, so that concludes my question.
And you're right, the skill set is not a highly sophisticated, sophisticated skill set, so, okay. I, I think the sense of the board is being communicated.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions before we vote to approve the contract?
Approving and then also want to throw something on our, our great general councils on the table to take a look at including that residency piece and the procurement policy down the road.
Okay, yes. Any other questions or comments? Then all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Counsel, I'm going to abstain, thank you.
You're, we have one abstention.
I'll abstain too.
We have two abstentions?
Yes, you do, you have three.
Oh, okay, we do, okay.
You have broken my record of unanimous votes in the first month of the year.
This one doesn't make sense.
Mary, what is the, what is the final vote?
Two to three. Three in favor, two abstentions.
All right.
Then next we have, is it Item H? What is your pleasure, colleagues?
Okay. Oh, Mary?
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Blackman.
The City of Detroit Water and Sewerage Department authorizes the director to approve Amendment Number Seven, which is DWSD contract number 6001278 LS-1773 to add $300,000 in funding for a total amended contract not to exceed the amount of $1,600,000 for legal services relating to all drainage charge matters and Michigan Warehousing Group versus City of Detroit with Miller Canfield and Pedak and Stone, P L C.
Is there support?
Support.
I'm sure this is self-explanatory. The litigation goes on.
Unfortunately, the litigation goes on.
Any questions or comments?
A lot of money.
It's a lot of money, but yeah.
After the vote.
There's a lot of money on the table.
Yes.
A lot of money on the table. All right, all those in favor of the adoption of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And it is, it is adopted.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would like to ask our attorney, Attorney Posby, if we could not have a, maybe a closed session with Miller Pedak, long name, to discuss the process for this because there are, there are extenuating circumstances as to why some things are being approved and not, so I think it would be helpful for us to have a conversation.
Okay, I would like to schedule it for the March meeting because the next three, four weeks, we will be doing numerous depositions in this case and by the time of the March meeting, the attorneys will have a much better feel for next steps, theories of liability, I mean, defense and how the depositions went, if they were helpful and can advance the case further.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item A, Commissioners?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Forte?
I move that the Board of Water Commissioners for the City of Detroit Water and Sewerage Department, one, approves an amendment to Schedule A of the Regional Sewerage Disposal System Lease, the sewer lease, and two, authorizes director to take such other action as may be necessary to accomplish the intent of this vote, including the execution of the amendment to Schedule A in the sewer lease.
Is there support? Commissioner Coleman?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So there is a, as you may recall from the lease, there was an attached schedule of every parcel of land that was considered a regional asset. And there is a piece of property that's a regional asset, but there's another entity that has a park on that parcel of land. So all we're doing with this action is kind of carving out that area where there's a park and it will no longer be a part of the sewage, I mean, the sewage disposal system. It's no longer part of the lease. It's just going to be dated over to the people running the park. So this is, it's very formal, but it's a very minor issue of just carving out this little part of the parcel for the park.
All right, comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion is adopted. And finally, Item A, Item J, Commissioners?
I think it's on me. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to the Board of Water and Commissioners for the City of Detroit Water and Sewer Department approves the execution of the intergovernmental agreement between DWSD and the Great Lakes Water Authority. Number two, prove the reimbursement of costs outlined in Exhibit A-1 specifically for $1,818,065 with a 10% allowance above the estimated costs. Three, authorize directors to take such other action as may be necessary to accomplish the intent of this vote.
And is there support? Commissioner Kenlock?
I'm going to support this, but definitely want to get some explanation as far as more money going to Gleywa.
No, well, it, this is an agreement between Gleywa and DWSD to share the cost of designing the underground infrastructure that's part of the East Jefferson renewal. I'm kind of very over summarizing it. Gleywa is going to pay us back for their portion of the design costs that relate to designing their assets that are going to go underground and part of it is our cost for what it will take to put our local assets under the ground under Jefferson. So it's, it's our contract, our engineers and outside contractors are taking the lead on this design process and Gleywa will pay us back for the design work related to their assets.
Okay, this is yes.
Yeah. And for this particular portion, they owe us more than we're paying out, if that's any comfort.
It is.
Some comfort.
Any other questions?
I know this is a big project that the mayor has special interest in as well.
Yes.
You want to comment, Dr.? Do you want to comment, Director Brown?
Yeah, I would, thank you, Gary Brown, Director DWSD. This is approximately a $200 million contract, I mean, project, it's not a contract for DWSD, obviously. There's every utility that you can imagine in Jefferson, every telecom, every, there's certainly water, sewer, electrical, gas, and so all of those utilities have to be coordinated. And so getting the engineering and design of DWSD's portion of the project is extremely important because we're the deepest in the ground, we're the furthest down. And until everybody knows what, where our assets are, the planning for the other assets will be difficult. So we're looking forward to fixing Jefferson. Those that drive it a lot understand how bad the street is and it needs to be completely reconstructed. And I've seen the, some of the drawings, it's going to be a magnificent project when it's done, so.
What's the range and from where to where in terms of streets and east to west?
Yeah, I know it's all the way from 375 and I, and it goes a long, it goes all the way to, I'm guessing, but I'll get back with you. It goes a long way. It's not a short run.
Project goes from 375 to Alter.
Alter, yeah.
Whoa, that's huge.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Blackman?
Six, six and a half miles. If we have any idea, this is just, oh, the design phase?
Yes.
Do we have any idea how much this might cost?
No.
Not yet.
And, and there are a lot of people that are looking for $200 million for the project, so. It's a big project, but long overdue.
Long overdue, there's no question. Thank you.
Other comments, other questions? Are we ready for the vote? All those in favor of adopting the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion is adopted. We next come to the director's metrics. Mr. Director?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I certainly will allow you to take a look at the metrics and if you have questions or concerns about any of them, I would like to take the time to talk about two important issues that have come up. One, you may have seen some very negative publicity with regards to water main breaks over the Martin Luther King holiday. We always expect this time of year, 14 to 15 breaks over a weekend and we got more than 60 water main breaks. And on top of that, the week before, we had more than 38 employees test positive and another 38 or so that were in close contact to people that had COVID. And so we had an inordinate number of people off work along with our contractors. The COVID isn't just affecting city workers, it's also affecting contractors. So we got caught short with the number of contractors that we had available to service those. The one that was reported on Harlow, aesthetically, that was bad.
Horrible.
And certainly I could have done a better job with the media in talking about that. For one thing, there was never anyone that was out of water on Harlow. So those that needed water for boilers or to cook or to drink or bathe, they had service. There were no basements that were flooded. We've had no claims with regards to vehicles being permanently damaged or seriously damaged. It was aesthetically bad and I take full responsibility for the way it was handled in the media. We, we have to do better. And so I've asked my staff to put together a contract for a security company to assist us with at least if we have to throttle down the water so that people aren't completely out of service while we make the repair, that will leave a person on site so that people know that we know about it, number one, and number two, most importantly, if the situation starts deteriorate, to deteriorate and get worse where the break is bigger than we originally thought it was, they can let someone know and we can reprioritize assets to fix it. So we're putting in plans, plans in place to both communicate with the media better and also have eyes on these water mains that have to be delayed. I mean, you have to prioritize and we were prioritizing the water main breaks where people were out of service, that they didn't have water. Those were, that was the priority. So aesthetically, it was bad, we didn't handle it well communication wise and we'll do better. Secondly, I see my friends from Hydrate Detroit are here. I would just want to indicate that, that we, Happy New Year, that we do have another $10 million that came from the state for affordability issues. And so if they know of anyone that is in need and qualifies, we certainly would like to get those names so that we can take care of those. We'll be coming back to the board shortly with a plan on how that $10 million will be distributed. And so we look forward to being able to do that. I just want to indicate that this isn't a shortage of dollars to help people, we have the money and now we just need help identifying those that are truly in need and also fit the qualification. So with that said, I'll, I know, I know it's been a long meeting. I apologize for not being here earlier. I was here and I got called out to the mayor's office on an urgent issue. But if you have any questions or concerns that I haven't addressed, I'd be more than happy to do it now.
Just, Mr. Director, I, I absolutely, you know, you missed a, a little interesting discussion that we had as relates to the properties being sold by the land bank and not having water service. And you know, because you've assisted in a couple of issues that have come to my attention. So I intend on absolutely going over to the water, I mean, to not the water, to the land bank and council because somebody, something has to stop them from, something has to be done to stop them from selling these properties to individuals who can't afford to actually put the water, connect, reconnect the water line. It's, it's just insane. I mean, you, I'm sure you get more calls. So it's, at this point, just with my little involvement, I consider it a crisis just because the number of individuals who have come to me as relates to that issue, stop selling them or at least do a better way of, of, no, they just have to stop selling because people don't, even if you tell them, they don't have the money. I mean, you remember with, with the other property there, about $10,000?
Yeah, and I mean, the, the good news is, is that as you recall, the city received about $900 million in ARPA funds.
Yes.
And I know that the city council took half of that, those dollars at the mayor's request and shored up the pension system, which is a good thing for the retirees. One day I hope to be one of them and I'll, I'll be able to benefit from that system. So let's make sure that it is, it is fiscally sound. But that left another $400 million and the city council has allocated those dollars to different. But that left another $400 million, and the City Council has allocated those dollars to different buckets. One of the buckets was for home repair, for Detroiters to be able, and I specifically asked for
Senior home repair?
It, there, there, that's one of the home repair programs, but there are four different programs, including one that is going to be new, that will be called a basement backup prevention subsidy program that we'll bring to the board as, as soon as we're, we're ready for you to sign off on it. But the point is, there are dollars in city government to be able to assist those residents with home repair. I specifically had $15 million set aside just for plumbing issues in homes, because our crews are in homes all the time, and we see the need, and people can't afford, and so there needs to be dollars. And so these, these programs are coming, I would suggest that we bring the land bank to the table and let them present, and then also allow you to ask questions, that, that would be one way to do it.
Can you do that, that would be easier?
I can take care of that. And then secondly, have somebody from HRD, Home Repair, Department of City Government, come in so that we have the knowledge to be able to share with our customers about programs that are available with dollars to be able to make these repairs. Roofing is one that's been advertised quite a bit, but the plumbing issues are there. And certainly, we see it all the time. Commissioner Garcia calls me almost weekly about an issue that you've just described. And so I, I'm not quite sure if I remember, but there was a $10 million contract for lead service lines. That's, it, it's not in front of you now, the bids are in, and we are, we'll be bringing it to you shortly. We're going to be replacing 5,000 a year, and the ones that we already have in the, you know, in our collector app, that we know where they are, we'll, we'll be taking care of those. And then we put $1 million aside in a separate contract just for land bank issues, and so.
Thank you, that's great.
The dollars are coming through the ARPA money that is already, it's not, it doesn't have to be allocated from the state, it's already at the city level. And, and the City Council has already allocated it to the buckets that they saw fit. And I can assure you, there are, I don't know if it's enough, but there's millions of dollars available for home repair, low income, and seniors.
Why did you point at me?
Well, I, you, 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 you asked a question about seniors, so I, I'm, I'm in that category too.
Thank you.
So I, I don't think it's as dark and as bleak as it, the, the beginning of the meeting may have, may have been, we just More than $400 million in light.
Jonathan, I would be happy to join you in sitting down with the Chair of the, and just open a, a communication channel.
Bring him here.
Oh, I know, but board to board, we should just, we should have a talk. Anything else, Mr. Director?
No, that's it, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Comments by the Commissioners? This has been a good, good meeting, a long meeting, but it's been a good meeting. And you break my record in unanimous votes in the very first meeting of the year? All right, any, any comments from Commissioners? Comments from the Chair, I think we've all been pretty vocal during the meeting.
Yes.
It's good to see people in person again, we did have a discussion too about how frustrating it is that the law has backtracked in, in terms of being able to participate remotely. And I don't, I, we, we'd like to have another discussion about that, maybe if only to send some recommendations to the legislature or whomever, let them know how difficult this is for us. And I'm sure it's, every library board, every planning commission, every village board of trustees have to be going through the same thing.
Yes.
Okay. All right, is there any other matters to come before this board? Then a motion to adjourn is in order. It's been moved.
Don't support it.
And supported, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, stay safe.